Okay, I have 5:30. Laura, are we ready to go? Great. It is 5:30 on Tuesday, June 15th. I'll call to order the study session for the city of Cherry Hills Village. And first up is, actually, probably the only thing, is the housekeeping code amendments, and Senior Planner Workman is going to lead. You have the floor.
All right, can you all hear me? Feel like making sure your mic's on the new, unmuting yourself. Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. As was just alluded to, we're here at this time for a study session related to a series of housekeeping amendments that are proposed to the land use regulations. Very quickly, before we jump into the nuts and bolts of it here, these amendments are generally minor in nature, really intended to create additional clarity and consistency or provide some more information. Not only is this responsible management of the code that was adopted about a year and a half ago, which has been generally pretty well received, but as we've been in it now for a year and a half, we've identified some things that either could be a little clearer or just didn't quite get cross-referenced or things like that. And so it's a good way to make sure that the code is accurate, up to date, all that kind of stuff. And this is something that staff intends to do on a semi-regular basis, likely a yearly basis. That way, we can avoid, you know, bringing one amendment at a time to you all. You know, over the course of six months, do six different ones. We'll just knock them all out in one. So, a couple of things associated with that. One, this is intended to be very informal, very conversational. So, as we go through this, if you have questions or thoughts or whatever, certainly don't feel obligated to wait to the end to have that discussion. And then, one of the things that we staff will be looking for, kind of at the end of this, is is this format, a format that was kind of easy for you to follow? Or there are things that we can do that would improve? Or do you need more information, less information, things of that nature? So, keep that tucked in the back of your mind as we go through this. And I should also mention, at this time, no draft language has been drafted. We'll certainly coordinate with the city attorney's office when we get to that point, but we really wanted to get your feedback and feedback from the Planning and Zoning Commission, which we got last Tuesday. They were generally very supportive of all these, understood, and thought that this was a good idea, a good approach. So, with that, again, all of these, these are the same tables that were in your packet for this evening. We do recognize that there will probably be a series of proposed future ordinances to do these. It's unlikely that would all happen under one ordinance, but for the sake of presentation and conversation, they've kind of been grouped into these themes, if you will. So, if and when we do get to this formally in the future, you can expect a whole different series of ordinances. So, the first one is related to discretionary approvals. And right now, the code doesn't give us specific guidance on how those discretionary approvals are to be documented. And it's much easier for staff in terms of research, but it's also more formal if council approves that by resolution. And so what this proposed amendment would do would be to put language into the code that would say when we have a discretionary approval, like a site plan or something like that. If you think back to the last land use application, the Denver First Site Plan application, that was approved by resolution. So, it would be that similar resolution process for those discretionary approvals like the site plan moving forward. The next series are related to some definitions. The first one is related to short-term rentals. Right now, there's some cross-referencing, and that cross-referencing has different timelines. Some of the sections say 30 days, some of the sections say 90 days. The proposal would be to revise all of those to 30-day references as opposed to the 90-day references. And that's one of those, when you just do a massive code amendment, sometimes not all those little details get picked up, and so this would clarify that. The next one is the definition for an accessory structure. Right now, the definition for an accessory structure can be and is interpreted for things like standalone fire pits or barbecues or things like that. And those aren't really what accessory structures and the nature of the regulations in the code are intended to mitigate the impacts for. And we do get a lot of questions and a lot of conversations that happen with our residents about where they can put these and how big they can be and that nature. And so, to clarify and explicitly say that they're not part of the accessory structure definition gives additional flexibility for the ultimate homeowner in terms of where they located on their property.
Paul?
Sir?
If I could just add on to that, or maybe ask you to clarify, how does this change affect the number of accessory structures that folks can put usually in their backyards? Isn't that usually most of the concerns that we get about our current code?
That's correct. So, there'd be no change in the proposed number of accessory structures you could have. This would just change what counts towards that number, which depending on the zone district you're in, it's usually about three. And so, this would allow you to have that and not count towards your accessory structure requirement. Okay? The next one is in Section 17, which there's a definition there for the city's master plan. Right now, the definition for the master plan includes the year that it was approved, 2008. So, that is the current version of the master plan. However, this proposed revision would remove the reference to the year and just leave it as the city's master plan. So, that way, every time we update the master plan, we don't also have to update this section of the code, which over time, somebody could forget to do, or it could reference you back to an old plan that isn't relevant anymore. The next theme is related to roles and responsibilities. The first one, number five there, is really just a clarification, likely a typo in the original ordinance, where when we get a land use application, we require an escrow or deposit that we use to pay for consultant time, whether it's engineering or building or legal. The applicant is responsible for executing that, not the director. And so this just changes that missed cross-reference there of who's responsible for that. And then, number six, in the Chapter 2, which gives powers and duties to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Previously, in the old code, the wireless communication section was in Chapter 16, and so the reference to their authority in Chapter 16 and 17 was accurate. With the code update, the wireless communication facility information was taken entirely out of Chapter 16, and a new chapter was created, Chapter 20. And so, what this would do is add Chapter 20 to the list of those sections of the code that they're allowed to or responsible for enforcing. So, instead of just referencing 16 and 17, it would reference 16, 17, and 20. So, no change in the approach, no change in how the process works, but just an update so there's a cross-reference to the new section. The first one on this slide, number seven, was also one that was detailed in your packet for additional information ahead of time. That one is that, right now, the land use regulations do not specifically or explicitly say whether or not you can have an accessory structure without a primary structure. And that's sort of unintuitive, because if you have a structure and nothing else, isn't it a primary structure? But anyways, I digress. But the historic practice in the city has been to allow accessory structures. So, think of pools, recreational facilities, things of that nature on a lot that's adjacent to a lot that's owned by the same property owner, if that makes sense. And so, what this would do is explicitly address whether or not that's allowed. That would be the first threshold across. The second one is, if yes, are there additional restrictions? Planning and Zoning Commission thought that some additional restrictions on that would be a good idea, i.e., you have to be an adjacent property owner in order to have a structure on an accessory structure on a lot without a primary structure. That just gives certain protections to the other adjacent property owners that somebody from Denver, let's say, buys a lot down here and constructs a tennis facility. So, again, right now, the code doesn't explicitly allow or prohibit that, but historically, the city has allowed it. And so, this proposal, assuming council's comfortable with it, would codify that, yes, you are allowed to do that, but there would likely be some additional parameters or rules by which you have to play when that scenario arises. Thoughts or questions on that one? No? Good deal. The next one on this, this is really just more of a, again, with the new code update and historic practices of the city. Historically, the city's allowed horses or equestrian facilities in the R1 and R2 Zone District, and then the R3 and R3A District with certain lot size minimums to have those horses and equestrian facilities. There's not a specific section in the code that says that in the new code. And so what this would do would add back the historic language related to the ability to do that.
Equestrian? What if someone said, "I want to put cattle"? Help me clarify that.
Sure. The short answer is that historically, the request has been for horses, because it's been more pleasure-related than, say, you know, wanting to have the family beef cow. So, it's just been more historically related to horses, because that's kind of been what has been the most popular form of livestock. Now, that's not to say we can't have a conversation if we want to expand that. We certainly can do that, but that's where, my understanding is, that's where that comes from, is because it's, horses have been the popular one. They're had, when you get into chickens and ducks and things like that, right? You have those, and there's nothing in the code related to those about a maximum number you can have or anything like that. It just can't be a nuisance per nuisance codes. And so, I think there was a distinction made with horses because the history of this, of the city and the number of sites that had horses.
Yeah, it would make sense to at least address that. So, in the event that, I don't know, someone wants to put a potluck over there.
We had a former mayor who raised goats, and he probably still does. He'd probably be very interested in your conversation with you about his ability to raise goats.
And I think Paul makes a good distinction here. Trying to craft new policies on a topic that gets to be that large really deserves its own discussion, I think, from our perspective. We are trying to allow council to be comfortable with bundling together a bunch of these, and the only way to do that is really to make sure that these are all somewhat more minor in nature. We have some other code amendments that we're working on right now, but we're treating those as standalone items. And one that you might recall that we've talked about last year, the amateur radio tower change. That has some public attention to it. There are some heavy lifting policy questions involved there. So, we are not going to bundle those lest it give the appearance that we're slipping something through that has some real heft to it. So, to sort of go beyond reverting back to the historical code, in some ways, I wonder if that leaches into the larger question territory.
Before we move on, is that something, and again, this is informal and conversational, but is that a bigger topic that council desires more discussion on?
No, I think what we're talking about here is just that, if we can limit this just to fixing the problems created by the code modernization that we did, that's a great, you know, limiting principle that I want, you know, I think we should do it. If there are others, I'm certain that animals were allowed under the old code, and I think there still are, but I think this was just directed towards horses that didn't get carried over, so.
Correct.
I think what we're, yeah, so what we're talking about really is, as long as we can stay on the grain of fixing any inadvertent omissions from the code, that's what we want to do.
Okay, perfect. The next one, number nine, was also one that was given additional detail in your packet, which is, prior to the submittal of a new building, i.e., home or new non-residential building, the addition, greater than 50% of the existing home, if you're going from a one-story home to a two-story home, you're required to have what we call a neighborhood input meeting. And it's great, because it gets neighbors talking, and it lets people know what's going on in their neighborhood and all that kind of stuff. And post-COVID, or pre-COVID, all those meetings, my understanding, were held here at City Hall in person with a set of paper plans. Well, with COVID, we went to an all-virtual format, which, actually, as I understand it, and I can attest to the ones that I've participated in, has actually increased attendance and increased participation, because now you don't have to take off work or do whatever, make plans to come down to City Hall. You can attend that meeting anywhere you have an internet connection in the world. And so, we often get folks attend those meetings from outside the city and from outside the state. You know, folks are on vacation, they check in for an hour, see what's going on. And it's really kind of facilitated a better conversation, in my opinion. And so what this amendment, this proposed amendment would do is allow for the option to have it virtually. It wouldn't require for it to be virtually, but it would allow for that option in the code, which right now doesn't explicitly have that language. And so, again, this would allow us that option moving forward in a post-COVID world. And like I said, it's really an effort to try and increase transparency and increase participation in those meetings.
There we go. Hybrid as well as, is it binary, either in-person or virtual? Or would there be an option for in-person plus participation virtually?
It's a good question. It was one of the discussion items we had with Planning and Zoning Commission last week. The preference, the strong preference, would be to do one or the other, just for logistical reasons, right? If somebody has a question and they're looking at a paper set of plans, it's often hard to translate that into then the electronic set of plans and all be on the same page. And it's easier to point to things if everybody's in one format or another. Now, that's not to say that we can't allow that hybrid option, but the preference would be to have one or the other, just for logistical reasons.
Okay. Small point, as long, I was sort of thinking we were going to wait till the end, but back a ways, when you were talking about the year attached to the reference about the master plan, rather than just omitting the year, and I'm sure you guys would have caught this or thought about it, maybe we want to put some adjectives in there, like most current, in lieu of the year, so that there's no ambiguity, somebody can't go reach back for a 10, 15-year-old master plan, you know, and conformed to the language.
Sure, and I'm not ignoring you. I'm taking notes.
No, 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 that's fine. That's all I had.
Okay, I appreciate that.
What times do you usually have these meetings with, during the day, right?
They're during the day. There's an option that we provide the applicant. We have them on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays, and they're generally in the afternoons, and they're scheduled for an hour. So, we offer them, I think the timeframes are like 1:30, 2:30, and 3:30 on those three days.
I think that's great. Anything increases the participation, because I think that, I was part of the council that actually passed that originally. We can solve a lot of the problems if we could talk to them before building begins. And I think it's, I'm glad to hear it's working.
It is, and, because the two most popular questions are, what's your construction timeline? And where are all the construction workers going to park? And so, it really helps, because oftentimes, the contractors are on that call, and they say, "If you have a problem, here's my phone number. Give me a call, and we'll take care of it," right? And so, it's proactive, and it's good neighborly and that sort of stuff. And it really, it really is a positive step in that process. Number 10 was one that was also given some additional detail in your packet. And number 10's a two-parter. So, right now, under the current code, there's three types of notification that is required prior to a public hearing. One is sending mailed notice to property owners, depending on the application type, a certain distance from that property. Another one is putting a physical sign on the property to notice the hearing. And the other is to publish that hearing in a newspaper that's quote-unquote "in general circulation in the village." And all of those are perfectly acceptable, industry standards have been for decades. The proposal or the consideration for number 10 is to do two things. One, right now, the lead time for the notification, as well as how wide that notification is, is dependent on the land use application type. So, when we get what I call sister applications, like we had for Denver First Church, where there was the preliminary plat, the rezoning, and the site plan, well, there's potentially three different sets of notification requirements. And that can lead to a lot of confusion, not only for staff and for the applicant, but most importantly, for the general public, right? Why didn't I get the notification for the zoning, but I got one for the site plan? Why did my neighbor get a notification and I didn't get a notification, right? And so, the first part of this proposal would be to have one standardized set of notification requirements for lead time and for distance of notification, specifically for the mailing. So, that'd be the first part. The second part is specifically related to the publication side of it. And like I mentioned, publishing in the newspaper is an industry standard. It has been for decade, for decades. But in a current environment, in the current world, right? We all know that the physical newspaper subscription, those are down, right? Newspaper newspapers are harder to get increasingly every year. And if someone does have a subscription to a newspaper, they generally have their subscription online, and they check it online anyways. So, really, and there's a list of other front-range communities, Denver metro area communities, that have changed from a newspaper notification to publishing on the city's website. And it's really more common now than not to do that type of publication. One, if folks are going to get it electronically, it's better to have it on the city's website where we have control over it. The second is that most folks, when they are looking for things that are coming to city council, they're not immediately going to go to a newspaper website and look and see what's on your agenda, right? They're generally going to come to the city's website and see what's on the agenda. And so, it's changing from the newspaper to the city website as a publication. One is just more user-friendly, and two is a little more intuitive given current environment and technology. So, that's the two parts of number 10 there. And again, we haven't drafted anything yet, so if there's recommendations, suggestions, concerns, we certainly would love to chat about those.
And this just requires a code change for us. We don't need to. As you probably know, the Greenwood Village has the same issue, and they have to go to the voters, because it's part of their charter.
Oh, wow. I didn't realize that.
So, in November, there will be a charter question for Greenwood Village about allowing them to move from publications to... Right now, I think they're publishing the Littleton Independent, I think. Not the Greenwood Village. So, yes, the...
And I think they do both right now, which is, also can create confusion and that kind of stuff, so.
I think this is a great step, because it's much more likely that people are going to get notice this way than through a newspaper. And if the idea is to actually maximize the notice and make people know this is the way to do it, particularly with our other things that we have in the city about getting, getting information out, so. It's all good, and it's cheaper, too. Have you looked at that? I mean, obviously, we spent, how much, any idea how much we spend?
Laura, do you know the answer?
All part. I assume just a few thousand dollars a year.
And while she's looking at it, I will say, not only is it cheaper, but logistically, it's far easier, because to get it published in the newspaper, we have to get it to them about a month ahead of when the hearing is. And so, it puts applicants in a really difficult spot of having their application ready, but not being able to meet that deadline in order to get to a council meeting.
And that's a huge frustration to applicants, because they can't do it.
That's correct.
What's the scope of this? I mean, is it just limited to building applications, land use, that sort of thing?
It would just be limited to the land use applications. Items that come before you for your consideration.
Well, and that's fine. The reason I ask the question is, if that's the case, then maybe for our next cleanup, we might want to take a look at all the other notifications that we publish and things like that, and see if that, too, is amenable to, I believe this is an improvement, and, you know, should we cast the net wider, in a sense.
The one, just out of full transparency, the one that wouldn't change, although the city doesn't do these, is annexations. But the city doesn't do them, so it doesn't really impact us. But annexations are governed by state law, and notification is by state law there. So, annexations would stay the same in the newspaper, but everything else would evolve.
It strikes me, too, the reason that's, a thousand dollars is so low is because the applicants generally pay for this, right?
That's correct.
Which is another, you know, for them, paying for this that doesn't do anything and only delays it 30 days is a huge frustration.
And it gives an appearance of trying to nickel-and-dime applicants, right? Because you get to the end of the project, when they've already paid all these fees and escrows, and then we say, "Oh, it's going to be another $500 for you to publish," so. And then the final one, I expect the most discussion, it's the most controversial, is removing an S off of "follows" in that section of code, which was just a typo, so. Again, these are intended to be relatively minor, relatively straightforward. Not a lot to chew on for these. Ones that, you know, when you get to the ordinance stage in this, you're not going to have folks pounding on the podium, you know, "How dare you." So, some next steps is to work with the city attorney's office to draft language based on the feedback we heard from you all tonight in planning and zoning last week. And then we would bring forward a series of ordinances, excuse me, again, under one presentation, one question and answer period, likely a series of ordinances later this summer, early fall, that would codify these changes. And that's it for the study session. So, if there's other things you want to go back to, or if you have questions, and don't forget, if you have feedback in terms of the format or how it was presented either in your packet or this evening, we'd love to have that feedback, too, because it is something we want to do fairly regularly, and we want to make sure that it's effective for you all.
Any other questions? For the changes that affect planning and zoning, will they have to take a vote on these actual language changes? How does that?
Yeah, they will, we'll go back to them before we come to you, and they'll make a recommendation on the specific language that's proposed. So, in short, the ordinance will go to them first. They'll look at the details of the ordinance, just like you will. They'll make a recommendation to you, and then, following that, we'll bring the ordinance forward to you.
But they'll have a chance to amend that language.
Correct.
And if they do, we, for these types of simple ones, we might be able to make an amendment on the spot if it's more substantive, we'll have to take it back.
Correct.
Work on it some more. Mr. Mayor, before we end the study session, I don't want to cut anybody off if you have any questions, but I did want to raise, since we are done early, it does invite, since we have time, we might have an opportunity to just talk about a conversation that the mayor and I had earlier regarding study session start times. You know, we started to talk through this, and Russell asked if we had considered starting tonight's study session at 6:00, or, well, I guess at a later time. You didn't say 6:00, per se. And truthfully, I just assumed that we started study sessions at 5:30 by practice. Talked to Laura. It sounds like we've done it this way for a while, and that, you know, I guess probably to avoid some confusion and so that folks don't get confused, you know. Now, when was this one? Is this one at 6:00, at 5:30, whatever it was? So, we looked in the, Laura looked, I don't want to take credit. Looked, and it does, you know, the rules suggest that the study session should usually happen before a meeting, but it does not give a start time. So, I guess with all that in mind, tonight would have been, 6:00 o'clock would have been a good thing. I guess I'm looking for input or feedback from council. Would you like us to, in conversations with the mayor and mayor pro tem, like us to maybe make a... make a judgment call on 5:30 or 6:00? Or do you want to keep it always at 5:30, no matter what?
Yeah, use your judgment.
Judgment call for that and let us decide. I think that is appropriate. There are some times when we needed an hour, on Zoom, too, we needed to get off and things went back on, but yeah, I think that's good. I think we could save people time. And in a sense, we're not really, we can't take any action. I'm not too concerned about people being too confused about it.
Sure.
Mayor, I've got one question on an agenda item. For Jessica, on the audit, is there a requirement due by a certain date?
We have to have it approved by city council before July 1st.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm fine with being flexible on it, as long as we have adequate time for the topic.
I'm also cognizant of some of our members who have other obligations during the day and makes it difficult for them to get here by 5:30, so. Okay. If no other business, we can, we will reconvene at 6:30 for the regular session.
Esteemed mayor, council members, city employees, and the Cherry Hills Village community at large, thank you for all your hard work for our city. I come to you as a private resident and not any way representative of local government entities. Comes to my attention that the property across Colorado Boulevard from my home to the east, a mile from this city hall, is listed for real estate sale. I want to promote community interests in the property as a resident and advocate for wilderness and wildlife. These lands are sacred, and I live and will die for them. During my residency here, I've been privileged with the presence of deer, coyotes, foxes, raccoons, owls, herons, fish. Just this year, bobcats and countless other animals have lived and thrived in this community. To maintain the mantle of city of Cherry Hills Village as semi-rural, wildlife is mandatory. Much of this land is wild already, and I will continue to advocate for our community health. Additionally, all city commissions should express similar interests in 4001 East Quincy for many communal goals, potentially planning and zoning, the Arts Initiative, Parks, Trails, and Recreation Commission within city prescribed doctrines. City Council is encouraged to participate in future plans for proposals for all of our neighbors and promote responsible property management. Kindly consider offering solutions to maintaining community equality, biodiversity, health, safety, and growth. This is the best place on earth. Alone, we can do so little. Together, we can do so much. Helen Keller. Thank you again for all your hard work, and peace and blessings to all.
Thank you, Mr. Leventon. Appreciate your words. Anyone else wish to speak? Audience time. If not, there's actually, we'll have it, discussion of the Southmore in just a minute. We'll get there. You sign up for that. You won't be missed. I don't think there's anybody here for reports from parks and commissions. So I'll move on to consent agenda item. Does anyone wish to remove anything from the consent agenda item? Or do I, would I entertain, I would entertain a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously. Next is unfinished business. And this is item 8A, Council Bill 5, Series 2021, repealing and replacing Article 2 of Chapter 6 of the Municipal Code Regarding Alcoholic Beverages. This is the second and final reading. City Clerk Gillespie, you have the floor.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Stewart, members of City Council. We are presenting Council Bill 5, Series 2021, on second and final reading. There have been no changes since it was approved on first reading. Just as a brief reminder, this is updating the organizational structure of alcohol in our city code and references to Colorado State statutes, information about fingerprinting processes. We are also making special event liquor permits exclusively local approval. We're updating some things about liquor tasting permits and modification of premises, making more of those administrative approval. And that's just a quick overview, but staff would be happy to answer any questions.
Council Gallagher?
No questions.
Any questions? If there are no questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve Council Bill 5, Series 2021, repealing and replacing Article 2 of Chapter 6 of the Municipal Code Concerning Alcoholic Beverages on second and final reading.
Second.
A motion and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call, please, Laura.
Council Sevavi?
Yes.
Council Wheel?
Yes.
Council Gallagher?
Yes.
Council Blum?
Yes.
It passes unanimously. Next item is 8B, restarting the master plan process. Senior Planner Workman. Just wing it, that's fine.
So as was just alluded to, the next item on your agenda is item 8B. It is a resolution approving restarting of the master plan. Just as a little bit of project background, early in 2020, there was some initial work done on the project. A lot of groundwork was laid. The survey, if you recall, was drafted. And really, the project got to a point where public input was needed in order to take some necessary next steps. And in October of last year, council voted to temporarily but indefinitely put a pause on that project until restrictions were lifted or lightened related to in-person public gatherings. Here we are today, fast forward seven, eight months. We now have vaccines, vaccination rates are increasing. The state and Tri-County are starting to lift most restrictions in terms of in-person gatherings. And so the next steps in the process are actually feasible at this time. And so because council took that formal action back in October to pause the project, council needs to take formal action in order to restart that project, and so that's why we're here this evening. We did have a similar conversation with the Planning and Zoning Commission last week at their hearing, at their meeting. They were generally supportive of restarting the project. They felt like it was an appropriate time to do so. They just wanted to make sure that we're thoughtful in our restart rollout approach. And one, make sure we're cognizant and allow folks to understand where we were in the project, what had already been accomplished. But also not just throw open the doors and invite, you know, a thousand people to an open house and that kind of stuff. So they agreed it's the right time. They just want to be thoughtful about it. So if council votes tonight to restart the project, some next steps that will hit the ground running, we're going to work with our consultant, Rick Engineering, to develop a project website. There'll be some social media and some articles in the Village Crier to let folks know that we're picking this back up. We'll initiate the Citizen Advisory Task Force and start to meet with them. We would likely do that probably late next month, sometime in August-ish. And then late summer, again, we would release the survey and likely have the first open house sometime in the fall. Planning and Zoning Commission, rightfully so, thought that, you know, we've all been cooped up for over a year now, and most folks this summer are going to be on vacation and doing some other things. So they felt like doing the open house and things of that after the Labor Day holiday would be appropriate. So that was some general guidance we got from them. So that's kind of the short version of it. Obviously, staff would recommend that City Council approve the restart of the master plan and direct staff to provide written notice to Rick Engineering to recommence the performance of their services for the Cherry Hills Village Master Plan update.
Any questions?
Just a couple of quick questions.
How many open meetings will there be? And if you could update us, because it's been a while, obviously, since we talked about this.
Open meetings, if I remember correctly, I think that there's three or four. Kind of one at this stage in the process, kind of one once there's been some development of the plan, and then one towards the end that kind of, okay, we've heard all your feedback, and here's where we're at, and then maybe one right before it goes to Planning and Zoning and U-Haul for consideration. And where we left off was essentially a lot of the current statistics, if you will, right? What's the city's demographics? What's our population? A lot of that work had already been done. Some evaluation of the existing master plan had been done, and the development of strategic questions in a survey had been created and was ready for distribution, more or less, some tweaking here and there. But we didn't want to release that survey if we were going to put a pause on the project because folks would then forget about it. And so we need to time the survey with the public input and that so that it can all inform each other on a generally consistent timeframe.
Thank you. Well, what's the duration of this project?
From here forward?
Yeah, from here forward.
From here forward is probably thirteen to fifteen months.
Thank you.
I want to build on what Mike just mentioned. So if we look at the timeline, then would the goal be to bring the master plan to completion, whatever changes if we need to make to it with this council? Because we're going to be reaching election here, next year, right? Or is it the year of the, am I? Twenty twenty-two, so we're going to bring this to closure before then? Okay. Sounds good. Okay.
And to follow, this process really is, Planning and Zoning, they take the labor and ore in creating this document. It's really, it isn't intended that the council goes back in and changes a lot of it. It's not really the idea. We can, we have given ourselves that authority to do that, but ideally, the Planning and Zoning is really the one who takes on this document, produces this document with city input. All right, if there are no more questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the restart of the master plan process and to direct staff to provide written notice to Rick Engineering to recommence performance of the services set forth in the Cherry Hills Village Master Plan update twenty twenty professional services agreement.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Okay, now, we're on to Agenda Item Nine A, which is Public Hearing Concerning the Organization of the Proposed Cherry Hills Village Southmore Circle and Hudson Parkway General Improvement District, and Council Bill Six, Series twenty twenty-one, Making Final Determinations With Respect to a Petition Concerning the Organization of the Proposed Cherry Hills Village Southmore Circle and Hudson Parkway General Improvement District pursuant to Section thirty-one twenty-five six oh one, and Providing for the Question in the Organization of such a district to be referred to the electors thereof, along with additional ballot issues authorizing the issuance of bonded indebtedness and imposition of general property taxes to accomplish the purpose of said district. And this is on first reading. So City Clerk Gillespie, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening again, Council and Mayor. We are revisiting the Proposed Southmore Circle and Hudson Parkway General Improvement District tonight. Just as a reminder, the proposed GID has eleven properties. It would be formed to remove the utility poles and bury an existing utility line, and the estimated cost is a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Hundred and twenty thousand. The first step is the public hearing, which has been noticed tonight according to state statute. At the public hearing, the council will hear from the public, which we have a couple of people today, as well as ascertain the total number of electors, the total valuation assessment of real and personal property, then ultimately, the petition sufficiency, evaluate the general benefit of the proposed GID and the improvement cost as compared to the GID, the proposal. So all of this is outlined in the staff memo as for findings, and I'm happy to go through that as well. So based on the Arapahoe County property records and voter registration for the properties of the proposed district, the number of electors of the proposed district is thirty. The total assessed valuation is one million, one hundred and eleven thousand, one hundred and fifteen dollars. Staff has determined that the twenty-one petition signatures are valid electors of the district, and therefore, the petition sufficiency is seventy percent, and the petition is sufficient. As for general benefit, if we look at the master plan, page five has the goal to promote the overall semi-rural character of Cherry Hills Village through design and maintenance of streetscapes, public lands, and public facilities, and includes the burial of above-ground utility lines on public and private lands as a directive towards achieving that goal. Regarding the improvement cost, as I mentioned, the petition states the estimated cost of the proposed improvement is a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. This is approximately ten point eight percent of the total assessed valuation of the properties in the proposed district. After the public hearing, we would go to the proposed council bill, which outlines City Council's findings, and would order the election to be held for the organization of the GID, referring those ballot measures to the electors of the GID. And staff would be happy to answer any questions before the public hearing is open.
Any questions for staff before we open?
No.
Counselor Wheel, Counselor Safavi?
Will we receive an explanation of exactly where the lines are, what's going on? There were a series of different maps in the packet, and as I was going through those, I was having a little trouble tracking what the differences were between the maps. So will there be a presentation that sort of describes the actual project?
I can certainly do my best, and then perhaps one of the petitioners can just correct me if I make any mistakes, but the understanding I have is that the line outlined on the map here encloses the eleven properties. The line that goes in the middle of all of those properties that goes north-south, that's where the utility line is that is planning to be buried, and that's my understanding, but RD can correct me if I'm wrong. There's just one utility line that's proposed to be buried.
Thank you.
Okay. No more questions? All it is, I'll open the public hearing, it is six forty-seven. Six forty-seven, open the public hearing, and let's see, the sign up here, first up is Brian Searls. Who wants to go first? Whoever would like to go first, please come up and state your name and your address.
It's hot out. Mayors and, Mayor and members of council, thank you for having us tonight. I quickly want to frame out, I'm here tonight to ask for your support for the improvement district. And councilman, I would explain, if you take a look at the boundary there, the eleven property owners have come together to take on the ownership of paying for this over time, should we have your partnership. And I would like to walk through chronologically why, how we got here, and then explain why we hope that you'll support us, because it's just not a benefit for the eleven properties. We've had several summers, winters, and falls since I've been here where the power has gone down and it has impacted a hundred, over a hundred or so neighbors every time we've had a storm. So in seventeen, late seventeen, when I moved in and bought the house, that late winter and fall, I'm sorry, fall and winter, we began having these outages. And the outages, they're not just these small outages, they're complete explosions from these transformers in the trees. The neighbors on the very north end have been down and had to move in a hotel for four days. Power goes down, and so because we're on the line there, we have the most impact of Excel coming in and trying to figure out where it's at. Well, we've become so familiar with the project that every time the utility trucks roll up, we always go outside and explain where the transformers are, so they don't spend three hours trying to look for them. In eighteen nineteen, it became even more serious, and also, there was a couple storms during the summer months, those really heavy rains and winds would also cause the damage to the transformers, again, causing the power to go out. Well, this last one in, let's see, January, February, March of twenty, we had another explosion on the transformers, which my friends and neighbors will explain the impact that they've had because they live closer to the transformers. Excel came out, and after that last storm, they came out with crews, and the next month, they were going to cut down the trees. Councilman Sheldon kind of stepped in at that point, I think communicated to the city staff. I want to thank the city staff for communicating with Excel because it gave us the opportunity to have a conversation about what our options were. And our options are this, the power lines are a problem because of the trees. We would like to keep the trees instead of having them come in and cut ten feet below and across and ten feet out on the easement. Because of that, we had another option, which was option two, which we could hire their vendors, but they would come in and do the same cut, although we would be paying for it out of pocket per household. So as a group, we started working with Excel, had the engineers, we've walked the property. Brian and I took on with Laura Hamilton on Hudson's side, really trying to make sure that we understood what the impact was going to be and the cost. And at the end of the day, the summary for us was, we could pay for this out of pocket, and/or we could come to the city and ask for a GID because of the improvement would be a benefit to the community. That's our belief. And so where we are today is a hundred percent participation on the GID. When you hear the number thirty, people have an opportunity to vote. I have two sons in college and one in high school. That includes those individuals because it's per household in that election. So, but we have a hundred percent participation from the residents, have signed on to take on the financial responsibility, and we also understand the financial responsibility from the financing that will take place, that will too be assessed should this go forward. I'm not here to tell you a sad story, although it's been a pain when the power goes down. We are prepared to fix this line, and it goes from Quincy, is that Princeton, right? Yes. And so we've all banded together. As you know, some of us put up some money to get the process going for the down payment. We've made a commitment, and we hope that you will support us in this effort. So thank you very much, and I do appreciate the staff's time in helping us navigate this very complex process and understanding how technical it is so that when you submit the petition, you don't leave anything off so that you don't get kicked off. And so we do look forward to the November election and want to thank you for your commitment and also your service to the city. RDC Wald at fifty-six oh seven, East Southmore Circle. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Please step up and just give your name and address.
I'm Brian Searls, fifty-six twenty-three, East Southmore Circle, Mr. Mayor, Council, staff. Thank you. I've been a resident for thirty-five years, a little bit longer than RD, I am his next-door neighbor, and so I've experienced more outages than he was able to report to you in the last four years of history. So as you know, you have, as a city, have funded the burying of the utility lines, starting at Happy Canyon and then heading west along Quincy, so this merely is a continuation only going north of the same area. And I agree, we'd rather keep our trees, keep our shade, keep our privacy that the trees afford and have more reliable utilities for all of our neighbors. So I obviously signed the petition, and I support this. Having read the crier in the past few editions, I noticed you got a lot of good federal money that came the way of the city. So should you want to allocate a small portion of that towards just the administrative expenses associated with forming a GID, we would not be opposed. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming, and thank you for your time and your words. Anyone else? You're welcome.
I'm the third one on the list, Devon Odom, five-six-three-three, East Southmore Circle. Thanks for your time. I live right next to Brian, who lives right next to RD, so we're all three on that same plot where most of the outages occur. My house has the most dense underbrush, so you can imagine that the transformers explode near ours, and we're the ones who get blamed by the neighbors. So we're very excited about this going through, and we would look forward to having the cable buried on the ground and not have to deal with this. Thank you very much.
Thank you as well for your time and coming down tonight. Appreciate it. If there are no further comments from the public, we'll close the public hearing at six fifty-five and reopen it. For any comments from council? Any questions?
No questions.
Absolutely in support of this measure.
Yeah, same.
All right, I'll entertain a motion then. I think it's printed in the staff memo.
I move to approve Council Bill Six, Series twenty twenty-one, Making Findings and Determinations With Respect to the Petition Concerning the Organization of Proposed Cherry Hills Village Southmore Circle and Hudson Parkway General Improvement District.
Second.
I'll finish, pursuant to Section thirty-one twenty-five six oh one, at Sec CRS, and providing for the question of organization of such district to be referred to the electors thereof, along with additional ballot issues authorizing issuance of bonded indebtedness and imposition of general property taxes to accomplish the purposes of said district on first reading.
Are we done?
Second.
Let me say this, that's probably the longest name of the improvement district I've ever seen.
I have a motion and a second for that motion. Any discussion? You've got great support, and this is terrific. Thanks for coming in, and we'll look forward to working with you. This is just first reading, there's going to be a second reading too, but go ahead.
Roll call.
Ask for a roll call? Laura, go ahead.
Counselor Wheel?
Yes.
Counselor Gallagher?
Yes.
Counselor Blum?
Yes.
Counselor Safavi?
Yes.
There you go. Passed unanimously. We'll see you at second reading if you'd like. Next item up is item nine B, Cherry Hills Village Art Commission Recommendation for Sculpture on Loan, and this will be Director Sager. You have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. The Cherry Hills Village Art Commission is seeking authorization to enter into an art loan agreement with Robert Mangold for the purpose of installing his sculpture, Win Song Three, in the city for a two-year period. Win Song would replace the existing sculpture entitled Really, which is along Quincy Avenue across from Cherry Hills Elementary. I guess it's that way. I know, this way. The total cost of the loan for twenty twenty-one will not exceed eleven thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars, and this includes a new base pedestal, potential materials for public works might need to install the sculpture, the fee that's paid to the artist, and the plaque that will be mounted on the pedestal. The eleven thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars will be paid from the Art Commission's line item that's located in the Parks and Recreation Fund. Staff included an article regarding the potential loan in the June issue of the village crier and has not received any negative feedback to date. Staff is recommending approval of the expenditure and has included a recommended motion for City Council in the staff memo, if council is so inclined. Commissioner Anne Marie Morrow is present in the audience tonight. She and I will be happy to answer any questions council may have at this time.
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
Just to refresh my memory, what's the budget?
The total budget for the Art Commission?
For the Art Commission?
It's typically twenty-one thousand dollars. This year, City Council allowed them to carry forward ten thousand dollars, so their total budget this year was thirty-one thousand.
Thank you.
More a matter of curiosity, but is it kinetic? Does it move?
It does move, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Safavi?
As a great artist, I like what I'm seeing, so.
All right. There's no further discussions, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the expenditure of not to exceed eleven thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars for the delivery installation, two-year loan, and removal of Win Song Three by Robert Mangold, to be installed in the city's property on the Quincy Avenue side of City Hall, and authorize the mayor to sign the art loan agreement, once signed by the artist.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, take a, this is a voice vote, all in favor, please, signal aye.
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 That passed unanimously. Next item- Next item is 9C on the new business, Resolution 17, Series 2021, amending the fee schedule. And this is City Clerk Gillespie. You have the floor.
Thank you. Um, our Resolution 17, 2021, amends our fee schedule, which was adopted for the first time by City Council in 2020, and staff aims to review this every year to make sure our fees are up to date. Um, the only changes in Resolution 17 are updating the liquor license fees, which were just removed from the code by Council Bill 5. So we now need to put them in the resolution. Um, so this does not have any impact to the budget as we're just keeping the same fees that we currently have, but staff would be happy to answer any questions.
Only questions, I guess these fees cover our, all of our costs as related to each of these items?
Yes, we have reviewed, staff, um, has reviewed all the fees included in the resolution to make sure that no updates are needed at this time and that all fees do cover staff costs.
Thank you.
Any questions, Counselors?
Just a quick question, um, I'm going to ask a general question, I'm assuming the answer is going to be general too. So, you, you know, when you look at these fees, where do we stand compared to other cities, uh, of similar size? Uh, you know, are we higher, lower, we're in the smack in the middle? Where do we stand when we look at these fees compared to other cities?
We haven't done a comprehensive review compared to other cities because normally we look at what our staff time is. Um, I think the last time that we looked was maybe when we were looking at business license fees throughout other cities, and that, that varies quite a bit. There are $10 ones, there are $30 ones, we're $25 a year for business license. Um, but as far as other ones, like building department fees are meant to cover the costs that we're charged by our consultants. Um, the liquor license fees are meant to cost, uh, cover staff time processing those licenses, that kind of thing.
So do you foresee then, as the minimum wage goes up in the future, uh, you know, the salaries and the compensations go up, that these fees will, will be reviewed periodically for them to go up? Are these reviews on an annual basis? Every, how often do we review these fees by the way?
Yeah, our goal would be to review them every year. Um, right now, I'm thinking just at the beginning of the year is a good kind of benchmark to, to look at those. Um, we would certainly be looking at our consultant fees for, uh, and, and making sure those are equal to what we're charging people. Um, as far as increasing something like a annual business fee, I don't know that we would do that unless there was a really big change in, in staff costs for something like that, um, just because it, it's a pretty established cost and, um, unless, and it is not a very involved process for staff, something like that. But, um, other things we would definitely want to keep up with, uh, staff costs. If it's hours and hours that we're spending, we want to make sure that it covers the actual cost of staff time.
Good, that's all, thank you.
If, if I could just piggyback on that, um, that's one of the advantages to having all the fees in a resolution as opposed to where the code, where it was, which is much more cumbersome to update. So this really facilitates a more flexible and responsive process.
Makes sense. Thanks.
Are these fees now subject to Tabor?
So, no. Um, Tabor in general references taxes. There's a lot of case law that talks about the difference between fees and taxes and what City Clerk Gillespie was referencing in terms of assessing fees that are tied to the city's costs incurred in managing the program that helps support the construction of these as fees and not taxes and, you know, in addition to the fact they're imposed specifically for specific reasons and not on a general basis. So, no.
Wasn't there a move to sweep fees under Tabor as well as taxes? Legislature and, uh, you know?
That's a constant, um, legal and semantic battle, I would say.
That will be at the forefront this year, especially.
In transportation, it's, it's definitely hit its peak, probably, peak fee.
Luckily for us, none of ours included transportation fee for fundraising purposes, uh, unlike the state's bill, so we will, we will, uh, I think these, a fee schedule like this for all application fees and staff time is a very well-established, um, protected process and cost throughout the metro or throughout the state, so.
Right, I don't, I don't have a problem with what we're doing, um, and what we're proposing so much as thinking about, um, if fees become part of Tabor, are we expressing them in a way that, you know, will move with inflation or, or, uh, that we won't end up kind of boxing ourselves in or causing ourselves, um, a real piece of administration to have to go to ballot for small, small amounts of money?
Yeah, I don't see that. Tabor is a constitutional amendment. It's embedded in the constitution. Interpretations by courts can impact things, but fees won't magically be swept under Tabor. Only if things are determined to be a tax would they be covered by the provisions of Tabor.
Okay, thank you.
There are no more comments or questions, I'll entertain a motion on Resolution 17.
I move to approve Resolution 17, Series 2021, Amending the Fee Schedule.
Second.
Have a motion and second. Further discussion? Hearing none, uh, I'll take a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? That passes, thank you, Laura. All right, um, going to reports now quickly, I have, have a few. On June, after our meeting on June 1st, we had, um, on the 3rd, there was an executive committee meeting in Rappel County Transportation Forum, which Counselor Wheel attended, and he can report on that. And the same night, because I couldn't attend because I was at the High Line Canal Underpass opening, um, with Counselor Gallagher and city manager and a lot of our staff, Jessica and Emily and Jay, um, which was a nice event, a lot of people there, well-attended, everybody was very happy. It's a beautiful, um, underpass, and I particularly like our side of the underpass, but I'm not bragging about, but, I like ours. So, um, but it was, um, Mayor Hancock was there and, um, and, and Counselor Brown, uh, Counselor Black, whose district it's in, and, um, it was a very good, um, very good event and very nice, um, I think it's, it's turned out very well, um, a lot more than they anticipated. I heard the cost testament originally, it was like three, and it ended up being not nine, am I, is that right? Total of everything. Both sides.
Yeah, I think the, the original Dr. Cog grant with all of the entities pitching in was about 7 million, and we had a million dollars that, uh, Rappel County Open Space had put on. So, yeah, it was about a million over that estimate by the time it got done.
Anyway, it looks great. And, let's see, um, six, the last, oh, that, last week, the General Assembly ended and they, they passed some things that, I don't want to steal our city attorney's thunder, but, um, some that affect us. One of them was, the governor signed into law changes so that now in a search for the city managers, we don't need to announce finalists, we can announce one finalist. And that was actually something that CML was pushed because they said it was, you know, it sounds nice in theory, but in practice, it's really difficult to get people to apply if they don't, if they, you know, without, maintain confidentiality if you have to announce finalists. So they've changed finalists to final, finalists plural, to finalists singular, if you wish, or you can announce all your finalists if you want to. But, uh, that was something that CML pushed forward, we, um, we provided, and I think it's a good, good change, it'll help, uh, in helping the process. The other change that is going to affect us is the governor signed is, we can, our email communications are going to be much more liberal. We can now, after the, uh, after May, we can now communicate among ourselves on scheduling issues and distribute like, um, citizen or constituent questions that come to us, we can, we ourselves can, can distribute them to other council members. And that's not a meeting, that's not a violation anymore. So, that's another thing we were pushing for, to say that, this is, you know, it hobbles us to have to channel everything through the city manager and it frees that up. So that was a nice, a nice change too, and that affects us on DDD. The other interesting thing they had was the HOA, um, there was some HOA legislation passed that, um, current HOA law, or former HOA law said you had, you could not ban the flying of the American flag. Well, they changed that this year, and they said basically, they took out American flag and said, y-you can't ban any flag, so regardless of the content. So if you want to fly a flag, the HOAs cannot, uh, interfere with that, and if you want to put up a sign, HOAs, HOAs can limit the number and, and maybe where they are, but otherwise they can't limit, um, expression. So it's, it's going to be a change, and it's, it's a change that may, you know, we want, I suggested to the city attorney, we might want to look at for ours. We've always been, our code about, it's pretty complicated and it's a burden on our city manager to kind of enforce that. But what the legislature has done for the HOAs is pretty simple. I mean, it's kind of nice, so it's, it's something to think about and, uh, interesting.
They, they ban any, they can't ban any flag. So if it's, uh, saying there's a fire in a theater, i-if something was so, uh, wrong, they still can't ban it.
You can ban, they, if you want to, as I understand, HOAs cannot ban signs based on its content anymore.
Any content.
Any kind, so you can put up any sign of anything. You can put up a sign of whatever, your, your, your school, your church, whatever. I mean, that's the way it's written now, it's very broad.
Yeah, it's, it's content-based, it all comes from the Reed v. Gilbert to Gilbert v. Reed, I always get those two mixed up, Supreme Court, Reed versus Gilbert, yep, a town of Reed. Right, and it, it's, uh, basically a, a pendulum swing back the other way. You can regulate form, size, location, but, um, or even number of signs, but not the actual content, right? So freedom of speech. Um, and so lots of sign codes have been updated to reflect that holding, and certainly that's what I view this HOA law as reflecting that principle.
Yeah, and it, the, the former law in HOA had all these provisions. If it's a political sign, you couldn't regulate it, you know, 15 days before, 45, you know, 45 before, 15 after. That's all gone now, they wiped that all out. Basically, you can put up a sign that says your candidate for the entire year. HOA can't say, can't say anything about it and can't make you take it down. It doesn't apply to commercial signs, so.
Yep.
Commercial is an exception.
That's exactly right. And per the Gilbert ruling, in essence, you can't have a category called political signs. That, that's the whole point. There are, there is no such thing as political signs. It's, it's content, it's content-driven, and that's not the place. So, you know, a lot of municipalities have codes that say for political signs, here's your rules, here's your size, here's your timing, no more.
Those are gone.
Those are gone.
So if the content is something promotes violence, that's okay? Somebody could fly a Nazi flag.
If it's protected by, I think, I think the flag, even flag burning is protected by the Supreme Court as I understand their ruling. So, yeah, I don't think, yeah. The other, the other thing that affects us in a limited way really is, is for many, for many years, of course, prosecutors and judges and jurors have had a special protection, you couldn't threaten them, it's a crime to threaten them. That's been extended to elected representatives now. All elected representatives in Colorado, um, including us, so that's, um, you know, another step. That, that passed for that, that sailed through the General Assembly. Let's see, um, on Monday, I attended the OSTAB meeting, um, where we made a final recommendation to the county commissioners to place the question of extending the open space sales tax on the ballot. So it'll, it'll be on the ballot, and this time it will not be sunsetted. It will be the proposition for the voters to say it'll be, uh, without, without a restriction. There are also some tweaks to it about, what, about the formula for how much can be used for, um, for maintenance and operations. And one of the things that we've, we, we suggest to the county commissioners is, for cities like us, we're landlocked, we can't acquire any more open space, right? I mean, there's just nothing left to acquire, but on the other hand, we have maintenance obligations for that we have, and, and right now, we're limited into, is how much of our, of that, of that open space funds we can use for maintenance. Um, the proposition is to eliminate that entirely and then, and then make that a, a component of the intergovernmental agreement that Rappel County has with us. So that can be different for each jurisdiction. So Cherry Hills Village may be allowed to use more of its for maintenance while others might, you know, the open space, because they don't have as many active parks or that kind of space. So it provides more flexibility. Other tweaks to allow Rapp, right now, we, um, city municipalities can apply for grants for active parks, but the county is forbidden under its language. It, it can only acquire open space and it doesn't, it can't use any of that money for active parks. Well, it has some of its own active parks that it really needs to be able to use as well because it's doing the same thing. So that'll be, that'll be tweaked as well, uh, in the language. So that, that's the kinds of things we were, we were working on and worked out. Um, so the, the, we had a small committee, then the, this is the Board of, the Board of OSTAB, and the county commissioners will take up the recommendation of the board, I think in a couple of weeks. And so expect, it will be on the ballot in November. Um, and I've been trying, as I'm at the opening, I've been trying to talk it up every time. If you ever see anybody, please tell them to vote for it, because it's a, it's a use, it's very helpful for our, for our, for our village, uh, that, the money that we get from this, um, from OSTAB for that, for our, for our parks. Um, I had, we have a mayor's lunch coming up tomorrow. And I think we have a mayor's and manager's meeting on Friday as well.
We do, and I'm off on Friday, so you'll be joined by Finance Director Sager at that call.
Oh, good, and that's a Zoom, that's a Zoom call, I think, still, so. Um, the CML Annual Meeting is, is that following Monday, it's, it's, it's not the annual meeting, it's the business meeting. So it's just the election and it's just, um, business. It's not the, the main meeting is going to be in September in Westminster, um, but this one is just a business meeting. I'm up for, I threw my hat in, I'm up for election again to be reelected to the same seat. I do have opposition, we'll see how all that goes and how that sorts out. It's interesting, there's actually a lot more interest, a lot more opposition now because before you'd actually have to go to the meeting and be there. Here, they could just, they can zoom it in, and so there's a lot more people who have thrown in their hat for the, um, to be on the board. And then there's also, um, and I think you probably all, the council members have all gotten information about that, but about if you, I'm, I'm, I've been designated the elect, person to elect, to cast the vote for our, for our village, for our municipality. And if you have any thoughts about that, or I, I know all these people who are, who are running too, and I'd be happy to talk to you about that if you have any questions about, about that. But each, each municipality gets one vote, and, and there's, um, 150, I think, or 60 or so in Colorado. Sursa is meeting, has its annual meeting, actually, are we going to attend that as well?
Yes, I'm, I'll be attending on behalf of the city.
Good, that's, I, I might zoom in too if that's a Zoom. Um, and then, of course, um, John Me Park opening is, um, Saturday, I'm sure we'll get, you could tell us about that. And I wanted to give a shout out to the chief for great work on the, if you could report on that, it would be very, I hope, hope you will do that for the burglary, that'd be great. Counselor?
Just a couple things, thanks to the chief also at the HOA meeting that we all attended. Not only did you educate the HOA, but I was educated as to what's going on in the city as far as, uh, uh, crime. Couple of questions for Chris. Uh, one relates to the timing of the RFP for the consultant, and the second thing, um, because a couple of those council members have talked about it, is the timing and where we can use those funds we receive from the federals. I think it's 1.6 million, and the timing as to when we would have to use it, and if there's any more newer information whether we can use it for something other than internet, i.e., self-service.
Sure. Um, so first of all, regarding the RFP, I assume you're referring to the RFP for Public Affairs Consultant? And I believe the due date for that is, uh, look at that, June 25th. It's like a teleprompter, right? Uh, June 25th, so, um, and, and again, we did more than just post it, we, we reached out to a few folks that we knew might be interested that we had heard good things about. So, I feel good that we'll get, uh, at least a couple of submissions for that. In regards to the ARPA funding, um, I think the public comment period, here, write another note, when the public comment period closes?
July 16th.
July 16th. So, but, final guidance will not come until after public comment is closed. I think it's staff's recommendation, it's, it's certainly my recommendation to council. We have until the end, December 31st, 2024, to earmark said funds, and we actually have until the end of 2026 to spend those funds. Because there is still so much that is so murky and there are communities that have far more money than we do, um, you know, I, we, we have a master plan that's going to be taking place. I, I personally think that as time goes on, some of the restrictions on cell service funding will actually loosen, not tighten. So my recommendation is that we take it very methodically and, uh, we make sure that we give the process ample opportunity to give us the maximum flexibility to use those dollars, especially for the types of projects that we would want to use them for.
Thanks. Do we have the check yet? I'm curious.
We should get it tomorrow.
Look at that timing.
We can pop the champagne.
Say, can someone, uh, give an update on the status of that graffiti on the spillway? And was there any identification of the individuals who defaced the property? And was there any identification of the individuals who defaced the property? For those of you who didn't see this, I lived here a long time, and I've never seen anything like that.
So I can, I can take a crack at that.
Thank you.
So we did get a report of some graffiti there on that spillway. The city is not in charge of that piece of property. It belongs to the HOA. The HOA was notified by not only Ralph, but our, by the PD also. And then we did some more follow-up. So the, I believe as the management company went out, they did a little bit of mitigation. Got another report that that mitigation probably wasn't up to snuff. So I called former Mayor Tisdale, who's on the board over there. And actually, while I was on the phone with him, he walked outside and took a look at it. Obviously, it needed to be taken care of a little bit more. And I don't know what the status is of it right now. I was personally out on a bicycle last week and rode it, and it was not as visible. But it certainly needs a little bit more work, and we have not identified any suspects with regard to who did that.
Thank you. Secondly, and the last thing, is there any plan to track, now that this beautiful underpass is in play, is there any plan to track traffic and get some numbers? I mean, you have all this casual observation. You know, I had family that was out on Saturday, and they go, someone who aborted their walk. This is an old guy, my father, who said, it's just not safe, you know? And so is there a plan to, and to get our hands around the increased traffic?
So staff has been talking about that. We did do a test with our current traffic counters that we use for vehicle traffic. Unfortunately, they only picked up bicycles, not pedestrians, and the bicycles had to be doing 10 miles an hour over. So it didn't pick up anybody walking or going slower than 10. So it's budget time right now, so staff will continue to look at if we can get some, some counters that will help us figure out pedestrian traffic, bicycle traffic, bicycle speeds, and those type of things. We were hoping to get some pre-underpass numbers when we put the counters out the last couple of months, but that didn't work out. But we, we would, we would like to know what the use is and, and speeds and those type of things.
And Jay, we're also, the signage that you see out there today that talks about e-bikes, prohibitions, and the mile, speed mile limits, those are a good first step. But councils should, and residents should be aware, that is not the complete signed package that's going to be put in place. There'll be a combination of efforts, both from the city, but also from the Conservancy, that's going to populate more the entire length of it with a more consistent message about those kinds of things, in addition to other things about rules of the road and other things like that. So, you know, I think there is definitely a plan in place to try and do more education. You know, coming from Denver, it's different rules here. Here's what they are, not just right there, but along the entire length. Is that, is that an accurate assessment?
Yes. And the signs you see out there now are just temporary. We just had those printed up. Normal street reflective signs, they will, the permanent signs will be part of the entire package that the High Line Conservancy and all of the participants have put together. So.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Chris, you can help me out on Arapahoe. But the, they talked about the transportation bill at some length also, the extra, the allocations of extra funds and project status, none of which really had a direct impact, immediate, on the city. As far as Dr. Cog is concerned, tomorrow, the, the big topics are going to be tip process, changes, improvements, and the impact of the federal funds that are going to come cascading down as a result of the COVID support. And that's all I have.
No report, just a sort of observation. I don't know how we, if we can do anything about it. But in our neighborhood, you know, they have those, I guess, little drainages when the water goes, the level goes up in the pond or a lake, the water drains, you know? Well, last year, there were a couple of little baby ducks during, you know, and they were stuck in there. I did the best I could to take them out, and they ended up dying. They lived there without food. This time, one of our neighbors called and said, you know, same drainage, there are three baby ducks now. This time, the fire department showed up and actually rescued the three ducks, which is really nice. And, you know, and I was just thinking that maybe there might be an easy solution here for the city, that these drainages, you know, the openings are about probably three inches by six inches metal covering. I wonder if, again, how many more of these little creatures end up going down there? And if we can actually put a little mesh fence or something that, still the water drains, but it prevents from these little ducklings going in there. So something to, to just consider. I think we will save the fire department some time from going there. That's all.
We'll take a look.
City manager?
I'm actually going to let the directors go first, and we'll just go down the road, because I think almost everybody has an update tonight. So.
So I've got a few informational updates. Staff will be meeting with XL again tomorrow. I think this is the third time we've had to meet with them. They continue to pothole and are unable to find a clear opening for their undergrounding still, even though we've tried to redevelop it with them. So hopefully tomorrow, we can come up with a path that will work. Again, it's hard to tell, and we can lay out a path, and until they do their potholing, it's hard to tell. So we continue to push them. We continue to keep working with them and trying to get that done as quick as possible. There's just two or three different runs. They have a lot of it done already. They've actually had to, instead of bore some, use backhoes to, to get it dug in. And so we've got a few more that we're working out. We may have to flop them over to the south side of Quincy under the bike path. But we are still working diligently to get that project wrapped up. And on the sewer project, it continues to move forward. We've run into a few problems on the Vine Street section owing to a Denver water line that was mismarked by eight feet, which I believe I mentioned before. Denver Water has now returned four times to fix the same break. And understandably, there are some neighbors that are a little irate. They've been out without water for a number of times. And so our contractor has been doing everything we can, communicating with residents. Staff has reached out to Denver Water at a staff level. I've personally reached out to the Denver Water liaison. I have not heard back from her for distributors to, and now, it's almost a moot point now, because hopefully Denver Water has gotten that fixed. So if you do hear about that, we don't like to pass the buck, but this was a Denver Water issue. Denver Water was not here on the PR side for us, and we're trying to make sure that doesn't happen again. So there were some late nights with Denver Water doing repairs. And our crew was actually out there for 12 hours, hand digging under Denver Water's line, safety-wise, so it didn't rupture while they were down in there. So we continue to move forward. We hope that's, that section should be done. We just have to fix the asphalt, and we'll move down the road a little bit. But we continue to move forward with that project.
And if I could just add on to what Jay said on that specifically, I do want to compliment Jay. He is not just, I mean, we have been aware that this has been a reoccurring issue with Denver Water. And he is not just sort of letting the residents know, you know, there's nothing we can do, it's their problem, go call them. Although that is one of the solutions that, available to them. He's also trying to proactively reach out to the government liaison, trying to take other steps to see what we can do to really push this on behalf of the residents who are impacted by this. So it's, it's been a very challenging situation.
Can you tell us a little bit about why is Denver Water, I mean, we're doing the sewers. Is Denver Water in the same tranche, or what's, why is there?
Denver Water, they actually cross, Denver Water goes east-west when we go north-south, right at the corner of Vine, where Vine turns and goes south. So our contractor did all of the locates they were supposed to do. Denver's locate was eight feet from where the line actually was. So our contractor nicked the line, stopped work immediately, called Denver Water. They came out and put a patch on it. It didn't burst, it wasn't leaking, but they thought they could put a patch on it and seal it. That evening, they were called back out again as it had come up through the road and broke. We asked Denver Water if we could, to speed up the process, cut out that section of line, lay our sewer line in, and then patch theirs back. Three, four hours tops to do all of that. They said no. We had to hand dig under their line for 12 hours. Last night, they came in and replaced that section of line that we asked to cut out. They wouldn't let us, but they cut it out last night. And so because of that mismarked line, and they actually came out after they fixed it and relocated it in the exact same spot where we told them it wasn't. The person locating wouldn't do anything about that. Ralph got on the phone right away. We got somebody out there to get the actual line marked. But again, these are days that are going on, because we, we can't get Denver Water to cooperate with us on this particular piece. Hopefully, that's the end of it right there.
We should be going to the end of the year.
Well, yeah, for that small section.
That section.
As you mentioned, the John Mead Park Allen Hutto Memorial Commons grand opening celebration will be not this Saturday, but next Saturday, which is the 26th. It's from 9:00 to noon. So right now, we have snacks, ice cream, scavenger hunts, a magic show, balloon art, prizes for the kids, lots of fun scheduled. So, adults too. And then Laura, if you'll switch me. I have a brief report on behalf of the 75th Anniversary Committee, which we are now calling 75 plus one. So you can see we've updated their logo. Their last meeting was held this last, the past Friday, and due to other commitments, we asked them to come present to council, but no one was available to present during the board committee and commission portion of tonight's meeting. So they asked me to go ahead and provide their update. So the committee has set the date for the 75th plus one anniversary celebration for Saturday, August 28th, from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m. It's an all-ages event that welcomes the community to enjoy the John Mead Park while commemorating the city's 75th anniversary. The theme for the event is a summer chic barbecue. There will be a tent constructed in the city hall parking lot, where a bar will be serving wine, beer, non-alcoholic drinks. The committee will have various food and ice cream trucks during the event. Live musical performances by a yet-to-be-determined local artist or children's choir will be held at Allen Hutto Memorial Commons. And then finally, the ceremony will include a time capsule slash vault dedication. The vault will include historically significant items, as well as items that are relevant to 2020. The 75th Anniversary Committee envisions that the vault will be mounted in city hall in the breezeway, subject to city council approval. And it will include an engraved commemorative message. They also envision opening the vault on the city's 100th anniversary. So pre-COVID, the committee planned to sell tickets to a gala that would help offset some of their costs. The approved 2021 budget included $30,000 in ticket revenue, and then their line item for expenses was $43,500, which is a difference of $13,500. Because of the delay in the current COVID restrictions, the committee scaled back their event, so they will not be selling tickets. It'll be a free event for everyone to attend. They'll be soliciting various donations from vendors to help keep their costs down. So their new budget is the $13,500, which was included in the approved 2021 budget. So I will be reporting any feedback council has to the 75th Committee at their next meeting. If there's any feedback you'd like to provide to me tonight, or I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Just a comment. Thank you for moving it on. We wanted to get it done this year, and it's good it's been done during the warm weather season.
I'll let them know. They're very excited. They're, they're anxious to get it started.
Any other comments, thoughts?
Update from Community Development. Council may recall, likely will recall, in March of this year, Denver First Church of the Nazarene had applications before you that were approved for a rezoning, a site plan amendment, and a preliminary plat. The, the update is that the church has been able to complete their Good Neighbor Agreement with the adjacent Covington neighborhood, which is, which is great in and of itself. But that also includes, I know there was some discussion, that also includes the inclusion of the future lots into that HOA. So that's, that's good news. However, the church is still negotiating with Brave Church on the shared parking agreement. Again, that, that agreement was between Brave and Denver First, with the city being a third party to that. They are still in negotiations for that. And you may recall or not that one of the conditions of approval on the site plan was that that agreement needed to be executed within 90 days of approval. It is not executed. Like I said, they are still negotiating. And so Denver First will need to request an extension of that approval from council. And so at a future council meeting date, you will see that request from Denver First Church. It is not a reopening of all of the applications. There are specific criteria in the code for finding when, when there is an extension requested. There's only two, that there's a, a good reason for it, and that there's general belief that, that it will happen in good faith. And so, again, council can expect to see that on a future agenda. And staff would encourage you, if folks do reach out to chat with you about that, that you would politely invite them to that future council meeting date to share their thoughts, and not engage in, in conversations that are, that are outside of that process.
The parking agreement is obviously more complicated than it seemed, at least to me on the surface. Do you, and we may not have visibility of what, what the issues are, but do you have any feel for what's causing the delay?
This conjecture on my part. I do genuinely believe it's good faith negotiations. I don't believe it's adversarial. I do believe that they are working towards an agreement. I think that there have been some unforeseen circumstances that have come up either in one or both of the churches that have, that they needed to resolve before they could make commitments via that shared parking agreement. Now, what those are and the details of those, I just don't know.
Good evening. A couple of updates. You've probably seen the, some lights along Hamden and Bellevue. We've been working traffic with both the motorcycles have been out, and then each of the sergeants has been leading a little bit of enforcement going on. So you'll see that a little bit more often. We have bicycles out when we can along the High Line and other parts of the city. I think that's going well this year. Our, our new mode of transportation on our bicycle is helping out with that immensely. And then real proud of some work that went on, not this past Friday, Friday before, about 4:00, we received information, officers had been out working a particular burglary. And we had an idea of my, what might be going on with this particular individual, and did a lot of follow-up. Our detective stayed, property tech stayed late. We were able to obtain a warrant, tried to find the suspect. His name is Charles Taylor that evening. Could not find him. And that led to a week of pretty intense investigation on the part of everybody, quite frankly, over in the PD, to include getting out everywhere in neighborhoods. In fact, we actually had a couple of phone calls. Why do I keep seeing police officers in my neighborhood today? Which, I love that phone call. But anyway, we put out information as we do because of our contacts. And our suspect was arrested without incident last Friday by Blackhawk PD, and lodged in the Gilpin County Jail, and has since been transferred down to the Arapahoe County Jail. We were able to secure some evidence that I think is just going to be great for our case, and just quite frankly, very proud. We were able to secure some evidence that I think is just going to be great for our case, and just quite frankly, very proud of everybody over at the PD. Everybody just jumped in and to get this thing solved quickly. So we put out, the previous Friday, we put out a notify me, always want to thank Laura for getting those things out, every which way, whatever, notify me, Facebook, all, all of the ways that we send information out. And got a lot of great feedback when I was out and about, I, I think there was a group of, how should I say this? Wives of the Village that were going to make sure that, that this gentleman was caught, I got that several times as I was out and about, but it was just really a, a good piece of work, and I'm very proud of them, so, he's in jail.
Great job.
And he's got a, with us, he has a $500,000 bond on this particular issue, so.
I only have two items for council tonight. One of them is, is some kudos to staff almost across the board, and I think you've heard some of that tonight. Paul and, and Laura, really standardizing some good, healthy maintenance for our codes. Jay, you know, don't underestimate the fact that we got that underpass done, you know, our portion of it done on time, on budget. And I agree with the mayor wholeheartedly, our site is designed better. On that note, the mayor was remiss in, in, he kind of slid over the fact that he made some great comments. Hats off, mayor, I thought you did a great job, represented the village very well at that very well-attended event, so congratulations, good job, I thought that was great. Also, Jessica, we have an audit that's ready to go. The chief for handling, let me tell you guys, she was a bulldog with that, that individual. Trying to think of all of these different ways, at one point, she was on a bike herself, trying to figure out where he might be. So honestly, staff is just, we're coming out of the, this time where we're locked down, and we're going, getting back to an in-person, and really proud of everyone stepping up to the plate and getting back into the groove of things, well done, everyone. My other comment is that I will, such a good job I staffed, that I'm taking a week off. I will be off the week before July 4th, so, and I will, I will not be that accessible via email or phone, so. Heads up on that, though.
Well, and that's a good point too, we don't have a meeting in the first part of July, so our next meeting is going to be the third Tuesday in July.
I just have one item I wanted to bring to council's attention. We, as the mayor mentioned, the legislative session has ended, we are finalizing our summaries and updates of bills of, or laws of significance to the city. But I want to make you aware of this House Bill 211314, which has repealed the State Department of Revenue's ability to suspend or hold drivers' licenses for non-payment of municipal court fees and fines. So that's going to have a significant impact, I think, on the city, we're in the process of trying to determine what that is. And about, almost going to, I have almost set up a meeting with Judge Wilburn to answer his questions about that. And so we're, we're trying to figure out kind of what that means. Interesting sort of footnote in this bill, which CML fought hard in opposition. CML, it did sneak in a little provision that requires a commission to be established to study other means by which municipalities can add some teeth for collection of these fines in the future outside of the driver's license process. So stay tuned for developments on that front, and looking for whatever financial impact may occur as a result.
Very good, and Laura? Unless there's any other, any else? All right, motion adjourned. All right. Aye. We'll see you all next, see you all in July, have a wonderful Independence Day.